October fourteenth at seven PM in the Veterans Meeting Room. Forum of the Town Hall to consider the following. Special use permit, section four point two one package store permit. Applicant is Nimesh Patel, owner of Stafford Springs Retail LLC. Location forty-seven West Main Street, map fifty-two, lot one thirty-two, zone LB. At this hearing, any persons interested will be heard and the written communications are on copies, or copies are in the zoning office. Cynthia Rumble, Chairman.
Oh yeah, and it was in the General Inquirer October fourth and October eleventh, two thousand fourteen.
All right, we will have a presentation by the applicant first and then permit questions and comments from the commission members and alternates and we will then open the public hearing to comments from the audience.
Good evening, I'm Tony Wendell Avery, I'm representing the applicant here tonight. The applicant is Nimesh Patel, Mr. Patel was called out on the last meeting, I believe, is not here tonight. The address for this application is forty-seven Main Street, it's in a local business zone, you're familiar, that's the old Stafford Food Center where the proposed CBS is being constructed right now. This was the site where the package store was located. The current, well, the current applicant owns this package store since two thousand and ten. And the store was razed earlier this year as part of the CBS project. Prior to two thousand and ten, there was a package store there. I'm not sure how far back it goes, I believe it goes back into early nineties, I think we're looking at a package store, it's been there probably for at least forty or forty-five When, when the store was razed this year for the CBS project, Mr. Patel's, he wasn't tenant, and he was in the package store that was adjacent to the food center, so that whole building had to be demolished. And at that time, Mr. Patel, he already intended he was going to reopen the package store there. He wasn't the owner of the building, he was just the owner of the business, but he already had intention he was going to reopen the package store. And he actually did not forfeit his liquor permit with the Liquor Control Commission. He did have to, they temporarily suspended it, there's no longer a location, they can't keep the permit, but it's not a forfeit, he still actually has the permit, just pending the construction of the new building, that was, that was always his intention. And actually, at some point after CBS, after the owner of the property received the approval to construct CBS, they did enter into a lease with Mr. Patel for, for that package store. So if the commission does ultimately approve this, that second building will, will be constructed. So tonight I'm merely asking the commission to consider approving the package store. It's, it's something that's allowed a special use permit under regulations under four point two one. Special use permits are, are uses that are, that are treated differently, as you know, they're usually use gets unique, distinct from other uses, and your regulations under six point three one have the criteria for approval of a special use permit. Most of that criterion, the six point three one, goes towards things such as parking, traffic, landscaping, architectural features, that, that's a large part of six point three one. And I think that maybe not all that, but most of that was addressed with the CBS site plan. The CBS site plan did locate this building, that the package store would be located even as a two-story structure, all the parking was identified, and landscape offers for and on there. I think the, I think the only thing that maybe they'd have to come back for for that building to be approved, architectural features, that was, that was something I think was a condition of that, that approval. So, so I think what we're really here for tonight is just to consider the use, the use itself. Six point three one requires that the commission finds that the foreuse to be harmonious and compatible with other, with the early development of the district or the neighborhood, it has to be used that fits in, if you will. And here, the package store, it's really a package store, it's a retail package store, so it's a retail use. It's located in the West Main Street, Main Street corridor, if you will, which consists of mixed use of residential, commercial, there's, there's, there are a lot of retail uses there. It's, the package store is being proposed on the same property as the large retail CBS store, so I think it, I think it conforms to, to that type of a development within that area. You have the, the new brewery that's up the street, on West Main Street, not too far up the street, you have the, the Old Arizona Restaurant, I forget the name, down on Main Street. So you have, you have similar uses nearby to that, so I think that it's a, it's a use that's not out of character for that area. The commission, several years ago, they decided that they wanted to have the opportunity to further scrutinize alcohol-related uses, and with that in mind, the commission passed a regulation five point one one. The regulation basically states that the commission may consider the proximity of alcohol-related uses to churches and schools in order to protect, protect the quiet enjoyment of religion and education. And I think if you apply those standards to this application, I think for several reasons it will, it will pass that scrutiny. Because for one, you have a situation here, it's a unique situation. If this was, if this was a new application for, for a package store where it never existed before, it was in close proximity to the schools and the churches, I think the commission would look at five point one one very closely and may have some concerns. This situation is different, you've got an existing use that's been there for thirty or forty years, it's already established itself. I'm, I have a document I'll give you from the Liquor Control Commission, I was able to go back a little ways, back to nineteen ninety-nine, as far back as we could go, which will show Liquor Control has never had any serious violations with the current owner or the previous owner back to nineteen ninety-nine, that's as far back as their records went, so I don't know what happened before that. But we have a recent history indicating that, you know, there's compliance with Liquor Control Commission. There was a minor violation for not having proper placards placed in the store, but nothing serious like, like underage, sales underage people or things like that. So I think you've got, you've got the history that's established from the use, along with the documentation, and I believe, I looked at a memo from, from the zoning officer, which I believe he's given you, but it seems like the police have, have no recent history that they have any incidents related to the package store. So I think you've got a unique situation, you've got a use that's already established itself through the years, is not being a probable use in that area. So I think if you were to, to apply five point eleven to it, I still think that you could easily find that this use would not be contrary to, to the regulations. And I think that's, that's pretty much it, I was going to keep it short, is there any questions the commission has? At this time, I'd like to interject.
Why is the number changed to forty-seven instead of thirty-seven?
I, I'm not sure, it's all one piece of property, I think it's because the two buildings-
Because it's a separate building for nine month purposes.
So this is a, a brand-new location, in a sense, it's not part of the Coopus Group?
It's part of the Coopus Group, it's the second building on the site, there's two buildings that cannot share the same address due to the nine-one-one system. But it, but it is still on the same legal parcel, same, same description, the same parcel.
That, that's why the application, you crossed out the thirty-seven for the forty-seven, okay?
Yeah, because thirty-seven was the site, the overall site, yeah.
At the first planning and zoning meeting with the Coopus Group, and they presented their application for the two buildings, at that time, I asked specifically if the second building was for the liquor store that was attached to the old Coop. And they specifically said absolutely not, they were going to build that building to be a medical, or a computer repair, or some other type of business, not a package store. So from that, it's a, it's a little disconcerting that now they said specifically and absolutely adamant it was not, that's becoming a cause. Also, you're saying that the use is the same, or the use was in effect prior to zoning regulations, correct?
I'm assuming it was, I think it was-
So it was prior to zoning regulations, so when zoning came in, of course, it was grandfathered at that time. But now this is a brand-new building, and it cannot be grandfathered, so the use is now gone. The use is gone there because the, the store is no longer there, it's a brand-new building, even though the location is on the same, it, the use is, your argument that the use should stay the same, I, I don't agree with. The other thing is, as you read in our regulations, this commission should consider the proximity of the establishment to schools, churches, synagogues, residential neighborhoods, and charitable institutions, such that in the judgment of the commission, the trade associated with the establishment does not disrupt the quiet pursuit of education and religion. I also looked up in state statutes to see if we were relatively close to state statutes regarding that, and basically, this is what the state statute says, too, that the planning and zoning commissions do have the, I don't know if I would say authority, or the right to either accept or deny based on the proximity of the establishment of this sort to schools and churches and residential. Then our CEO noted that the package store, if were to be approved, would, would have the new street address, and it would be zoned, local business, but it is abutted to the north by residential homes, east by residential homes, and Zone C along with St. Edward's Roman Catholic Church, St. Edward's School across from Church Street, south by First United Methodist Church, across High Street, and west by residential homes and commercial businesses. So you're surrounded by residential churches and schools. So that does make for concern.
Well, the use, I mean, I wasn't, I didn't imply that we were trying to claim any grandfather on this, my, my statement was that it was continuous use up until the summer when the building was razed.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it was, because it's, the use hasn't been there for three or four months now, I guess, at this point. Although it was, it was his intention always, as the, as the package store owners, his intention to, to try to maintain that use. I understand, and when Coopus was here, there, I tried to listen to that tape, by the way, and you can't, you can't, you can't hear your questions, but you can't hear what they're saying, but, so I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what they said, but by your, by your response, it appears that you could be led to believe at that point they were not renting into a package store.
Correct.
Okay. I know it was shortly thereafter that they had rent, had entered into the lease, it was after that they entered into the lease for the package store. And they're, they, they, it's my understanding they pursued the medical and they-
They did.
And the reason that they gone with the package store is the medical tenants were not going to pan out for them. So my discussion with, with Coopus, they don't build unless they have a tenant, right now they have a tenant, they would have to be the package store, so if the commission doesn't approve the package store, at this point, they wouldn't be going forward with the second building, is my understanding.
That is correct, that's what they did say, the Coopus, unless they have a tenant, they will not build.
I have a question, Wendell. Do, would it be just the package store in that building, nothing else, one floor?
No, there's, because they have to come, they would have to come back with an architectural, an architectural approval, I don't have a lot for you on that, that would be-
A square foot, did you have an idea?
But I have a floor plan.
Good, good.
Okay.
That helps.
And, and the floor plan, the, the package store would not be the entire first floor.
So they are going to do a two-star building like they had proposed?
I, I'm not sure, I believe so, I don't, I don't know, maybe.
Isn't that what we approved, just do two-storys in the second building?
One or two.
One or two.
They were-
So it could still be a-
Yeah, I'm not sure about the two-story.
They weren't sure they were going to do two at the time.
But if you, if you look at this, the, the one store, basically, they would have, the package store would take up about two-thirds.
Okay.
Okay.
And what's the other third?
Uh, that's just an empty tenant space for a second tenant, which, you know, they don't have a tenant.
The proposed tenant spaces, what you're talking about, on the, on the left is-
Yes, yes. The building, the building footprint's forty-six hundred square feet, whether it's one or two stories, which would change the square footage, but the footprint itself, first floor is forty-six hundred.
So that thirteen hundred square foot proposed tenant space would be the other side of the building?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
On the floor?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I know they talked about lots of two-story buildings, I'm not, I'm not sure at this point what they were doing.
So they, they would only sell beer and liquor?
Yeah, the traditional, my understanding is the traditional package store items.
But that includes more than that?
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to have, I mean, this, the application tonight is for, for the package store.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at-
They usually would sell cigarettes and probably lary things, I don't know what's-
Well, what I'm getting at is, is CBS, and, and it's all over the TV, and everybody sees it, that they're big into this health initiative where they won't sell beer and they won't sell cigarettes, and then you go next door and you can buy your beer and cigarette, and somehow all of a sudden-
But Nancy, don't, don't, CBS doesn't own the property.
That's right.
No, that's true.
They're only renting, so they have no control.
No, they have no control, we do, but they don't.
The, the, one last thing I'd like to point out when you're looking at their regulation five eleven, is that, that regulation allows the commission to take into consideration the proximity to the churches and to the schools places. But when that regulation was drafted, it could have prohibited alcohol, sales of alcohol within a set distance. You could have said in that regulation, no package stores within a thousand feet, okay? That would not have been excluded or zoning, that would have been leaked, but if regulations don't say that, so I think the regulations, you know, you can certainly read into the regulations that, that this type of use is allowed in close proximity to the school, to the church, under the right circumstances. And I, and I think that we have a unique situation, but we've already had a track record to, to demonstrate the building.
Wendell, do you know when that five eleven was put in?
No.
Do you have any memory when you were, you were-
It was not my time, I don't believe, I don't believe it was in my-
I think it was Bill Quinter from South Windsor.
After when?
I'm not sure, it's not dated, I, I-
It was before you, Wendell. Didn't we, didn't we redo the regs with Bill Quinter from South Windsor?
I'm not sure if it was, it could have been.
It doesn't matter.
I didn't think it was that long, but it could have been.
Okay. So the board at the time, and I get your point, the board at the time could have made that pretty definitive, and they left it open, the whole idea of the special use permit.
Exactly.
The special use permit indicates that there is attached a budding owner. I don't have a copy of it, I've never seen a copy of it, I know the person who had the church didn't get any information, it was submitted with the application.
These are the notices that went out, the public hearing, that's posted, it's listed here, it should have been after the statute. Did you get that, get this conference?
No.
Or all the table, they were notified. They were notified, everybody?
I had a lot of, I had a lot of green cards that came back, unclaimed, unsigned, probably-
I knew that, I knew that.
Did you have it?
I had it.
Is there one in all?
No. I can make copies out.
I probably got half of the green cards back, green cards back. Unfortunately, I had, I sent them probably one day apart from the same list that I sent for the variants for the sign for CBS, we have an application for a sign variance from CBS, and it's the same butter, so I took the same list and I sent them the notice for that guarantee, so they got hammered with, with certified mail from me two days in a row, so a lot of them came back on the way.
So they want a different sign?
When a lawyer sends a certified letter, you don't always want to go get it.
Especially if they could tip in the same, the same week.
True, yeah, really.
I couldn't really put them together, I thought about it, I said it better.
So now CBS wants to do a different sign than when you approved?
That's the answer.
Another day.
A little bit bigger, okay, that makes me feel better.
Any other questions or comments from the board or the elders?
I'm all set.
Okay, we'll open it up to the public, if anyone would like to make a comment. If you do, please, please-
Do they have any, um-
Excuse me, could you just give your name and address here?
Yeah, I'm Shawn Dow, fifty-three West Main Street. Do they have any plans of taking the building down right next to it, would be fifty-one West Main Street?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
They don't have any plans of taking that, that house down?
Yeah.
For added?
That is a separate parcel.
The house, yes, it's not the whole, separate owners.
So they're going to put everything all in that one?
That's a separate owner, separate parcel, nothing to do with this application.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
My name is Joe Tone, I live at fifty-five Prospect Street, and I'm curious what Mr. Patel's relationship was to the food store that was there before.
He was, he was a tenant. Oh.
The package store.
And, yeah.
The combination-
I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I just, I'm just familiar with him, he owned a package store, I don't know if he, if he was the same family that owned the food store, I'm not, I'm not sure.
My concern is that when the food store was going out, they caused extreme blighted conditions behind the supermarkets, and it went on for months, and I finally wrote a protest letter to the health inspector and the first selectman, and forced them to do some cleanup. I'd like some assurances that these people will be a quality tenant that moves into town, I, I don't want a junk store, or a trash store, community. Main Street is becoming a quaint little downtown walking district, and if we have trash piled up behind the store, and stuff coming out, it goes against everything that we're moving for.
Especially with schools and churches.
Was that, was that just recently towards, like, very young?
It went on, it went on for months, and we complained, I personally complained at the store, and they just said, mm, you know, that's how it is, well, it's not how it is. There were ordinances, and they finally did have to comply.
Just, just to interject, they, they did, the commission did approve the site plan as part of that Coopus group, is the owner slash manager of the property, CBS is a tenant, this would be a tenant, the vacant space shown on the floor plan would be another tenant, there's a property management group that oversees the property, it's not necessarily the tenant, there won't be the tenant. I know that, I know that for that.
Even interior too?
I'm not aware of what the terms are, interior, but exterior is part of plowing, trash, you know, keeping the site clean and plowing and so forth, that is our management company.
I think you're, you're talking specifically to the, to the food center, correct?
Oh, I think, I'm not, I'm not sure what the relationship there was, thank you.
And I know on the, on the plans that we approved for the Coopus group, they did have a screened trash area in the back, so it should not be, it should not be open and, and, you know, and available, and to be able to be seen by the public.
As I recall, they had land discussion on the trash screening.
We did, because we knew it was, we knew it was an issue towards the end of the life of the food stores. Any other comments or questions from the public? Any other questions or comments from the commission? All right, we'll close the public hearing at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're at a regular meeting at this time, we have Gene Julian, Nancy Rovetto, Jack Macho, Roger Colosari, and myself, Cindy Rumble. The first item on the agenda is to review the minutes of September twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, at the meeting room.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from the September twenty-third meeting.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
It all looks great to me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye abstain.
Thanks, Ian, that was, that was very-
Complicated work.
Very complicated, very detailed, we did a great job on that.
Good job, yes.
The next item on the agenda is discussion and possible actions, special use permit, section four point two one, package store permit, applicant Nimesh Patel, owner Stafford Springs Retail LLC, location forty-seven West Main Street, map number fifty-two lot, number one thirty-two, zone LB.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the-
I think, well.
To permit a permit for the package store for Mr. Patel, owner of Stafford Springs Retail LLC, location forty-seven West Main Street, map fifty-two, lot one thirty-two, and LB zone.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Well, actually, I, I think the Coopus group could probably find a tenant that would be more suitable for that building, I really do. I think it's too close to the schools, the churches, the synagogues, even though the use was there for many, many years, it was prior to zoning and probably prior to, to recognizing the neighborhood, it's also giving a mixed message. CBS is, is a health store, and then you go a few feet and, and you have the opposite. So that, that's a mixed message to me right there. And if they could do the, the one or two-storys, and they can get in businesses that could possibly hire more people to work, and not just the one tenant with, I believe it's a couple, a man and a wife, running the business, I, I really think that instead of getting locked into, to one business there and, and the one-floor building, I, I really think that this commission could probably do something a lot better, and that would be better, as that gentleman said, with, with the flavor of our main street and, and the small little businesses, and our beautiful churches and schools, and we work very, very hard with the Coopus group and the architect of the CBS. I think the public is going to be very happy, Cindy worked her heart out on that. And so that, that's how I feel, I just don't think that this is the, the best that we can do for that location.
No, I agree with Nancy, and, and to me, it's unique neighborhood, and with the brand-new building, I, I know it was there forever, but that building's gone, to me, that use is gone. To me, that use is gone. And, and I think we're well in our rights to not let it come back. Because of the neighborhood.
I, I, I've heard a lot, a lot of discussion of what would be more suited for that area. In some place, people can go and buy milk and bread and, and something that they can walk to and walk home other than some kind of liquor or wine. We, we've got three other, uh, package stores in town in, in, I don't think we need another one, especially in a location next to the churches and school.
Excuse me, through my discussions with the liquor commission and fielding questions regarding speculation about this is, it's my understanding there's four liquor permits available for the town law, not available, but four liquor permits allotted for, for the town. Three of them are currently occupied. And this is the fourth one which was occupied and has now been voluntarily suspended by the owner while this transpires. If this liquor, if this package store isn't approved at this location, that permit would be transferred to another location subject to the same special use permit.
Right, that's what I understand too. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it...
Basically a cap of four.
It could go somewhere else. What we're voting on is the location, not the existing of the package stores.
Right.
It's the location of the use.
I, I would just add that, you know, my concern is, and we have the same discussion when we were, when we have the CBS proposal before us. And that is that we, as a commission, cannot dictate what uses come in. Our, our job is to determine whether our application before us is in compliance. And I know that there, there's always gonna be a difference of opinion as to, you know, what, what's the better business? What's the better type of business? But if the business is permitted and the application falls within, um, within our regulations, then, um, you know, in my opinion, we need to approve it.
Well, I guess, Cindy, that's, that's why this is listed under special use permit, because it is, um, a unique, a, a special use. So it's not like you go the regulations, oh, you can do this, this, and this. This is under special use because you have to consider the surrounding areas. And, uh, when this was put in and I had worked on it, and that's why we didn't say yes or no. You could have it in local business, you could not. It's because, um, because of the proximity of a neighborhood. Now, if, if the CBS in the second building were over on the one ninety corridor, over by the big Y, I think it would be an absolutely wonderful spot for it. And that's why we have a special use permit. Uh, because if a developer comes in and wants to put a liquor store in the middle of a, a condo, community, or whatever, you know, we have the, the authority to say, hey, wait a minute, I think you can find a better location for that 'cause it will disrupt the neighborhood, uh, the, the people of the neighborhood and, and the ambiance of the neighborhood. So that's why we have it as a special use permit. I think Wendell was wondering that too. Um, because I, I think you need to have the latitude that this allows you to understand what is best for the, the residents. And that's what's best for the developer of the town's people.
Well, I feel that the location is all right because, just like the CBS, it helps the people down this end of the town. They can walk there. And the other package stores are way up the other end of Stafford. So this package store would serve the people that could walk to it from, uh, the, uh, area down, down in this area.
There's no vote yet. We're still discussing the vote.
We're discussing.
Discussing the motion.
We have a motion pending. We're still discussing.
That's a rather long discussion, you know. Don't usually go on that long after.
Uh, I just would like some clarity on the original application for the CBS building. Would we approve it with one or two buildings on site?
Two. Two.
Two. Two. So should this lease not be finalized due to our denial? Would that then impact the other, the other application? If, would they go through with, with finalizing this building?
I think Wendell answered that. They only build the building when they have a tenant.
Right, so, but it would still leave us open because our original approval was for two buildings. For our current, so it wouldn't change that first approval.
No, you can always, you can do the second building, but it's...
The second building location's been approved.
Right.
Um, the uses have not.
Because I, I realize that they didn't have a tenant. They, because your discussion, I remember the discussion of what was going on there.
Right.
But if this is denied, then it's not happening.
So they won't build it?
At this time.
At this time.
So would that be open indefinitely or...
Oh, yes, yes.
So not indefinitely?
Well...
Because the permit is... So this is kind of my question around...
Five years.
Is this, okay, so then you have five years to...
Right.
Has Mr. Patel considered all putting it down in the town area? Again, it's within walking distance, but it's around the right church and school.
I'm sorry, we've already closed the public hearing.
I was just gonna make a comment. I'm...
Public hearing has closed. The public hearing is closed.
Okay. Can't accept any, any outside comment.
Any other discussion?
I think we finished our discussion. We can move to the vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
I'll close, name. She'll try.
All right, the next item on the agenda, I, I'm sorry, sir, we did close the public hearing before and...
I was just gonna make a comment. What you're doing is allowing, and the product store right next to a church that does Alcoholics Anonymous and Alcoholics Anonymous and has all kinds of ministries in this community to make it a better place.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir.
You're just, you're just going the other way.
I had asked a comment on a couple of the cases, so we can't consider that at this point. The next item on the agenda is camping area annual renewal permit number fourteen dash one hundred. Reddington Rock Riding Club Incorporated, location ninety-three Kendall Road, map forty-three, lot nineteen, AAA.
As you're aware, we had a discussion on the last meeting, a public submitted a letter just prior to me withdrawing my application. I received a letter today, a phone call this morning, and a letter this afternoon. From the attorney from, uh, Karen, Karen Cappella, Cappella, uh, who are now retained to represent the Reddington Rock Riding Club. In her letter, she clarifies that the application was withdrawn. She is seeking to meet with myself as well as the town attorney to discuss his legal opinion. She was just retained probably before Thursday or Friday of last week, late. She doesn't have time to digest all the correspondence and documentation, which is understandable. So she asked if she could reach out to our town attorney. And I told her that she would need to go through the commission in regards to that. And you guys can decide however you wanna go about that. I'm certainly open to me, her, and Mr. Muska. I also noted in my memo to you that basically the camping season ends tomorrow. Where vehicles need to be moved and so forth. I just note that to indicate there's, there's some time for consideration. We've been considering this since tonight. But, you know, it's, it's up to you as a commission, how do you want to direct me to act in regards to the application? The application's withdrawn. There's no application right now. So as of tomorrow, there's, um, some of, if anybody occupying the, the grounds during the week exclusive of the conditions or the stipulations and the, uh, special exception that they received in nineteen seventy-one, you know, would we, uh, cease and desist whether, or we, you know, as I said, the season's winding down. You know, we continue negotiating for lack of a better term with them. See if there are new applications recently.
Did, did the council attorney give you any indication as to what the town line making with respect to moving with you?
She wanted to expedite it. Uh, she, uh, she noted at the bottom of her letter, she will work diligently to pursue a, a review and a hopeful resolution of this matter with, with me and the town attorney. She understands, in my telephone conversation, she understands that it's been dragging on. She also understands that there's been a lot of opinions voiced and a lot of course, she needs, she's digesting a lot of information all at once. And, uh, she has not been involved at all through any of this process. So she needs to get up to speed and then, as she said, speak intelligently.
Is there anybody who, who has stayed longer than the October fifteenth? I mean, someone said someone's there in the round or something. But here's given a something, thank you.
There, yes, there was, uh, I'm not quite sure if that was through the winter, but it was through the summer.
I don't think it was in winter.
It wasn't after the...
I don't think so either, because the water shut off out there and so forth. Um, I, I, I did indicate in my memo to you that I, uh, the resident did reach out to me asking to speak tonight. And I don't know the commission's, uh, feeling on that, with the application being officially withdrawn. If you wanna have someone speak or not. I, I had spoken to the resident before receiving the letter and the phone call. So a, at that time, it was a, uh, an item on the agenda, uh, to be discussed. So I, I, I did indicate that he would be welcome to, to speak. But like what happened since then, I don't know.
I think, in my opinion, because the, because the permit is now officially withdrawn, I, I don't think it's appropriate to have any more discussion.
Correct.
I apologize to the resident I spoke to earlier. I didn't have the information.
Well, this has been a very fluid, uh, situation unfortunately. So I, I apologize to the person who may have come tonight who wanted to speak. But legally now, we do not have a, we do not have a permit, um, before us, so... I would say, since it is the end of the, it's the end of the camping season and because the club just retained the attorney, I would have no objection to, um, giving them another two-week extension until our next meeting to give her the opportunity to meet with you.
Or just, you know, the, uh, application's dead and you start over. Whether you wanna...
Um, I don't think that, um, the town attorney should be involved unless we indicate that.
Right, well, that's, I, I, I don't wanna permit anyone for this application or any other application to speak directly to the town attorney without going through the commission first.
Right.
If, if that's okay, we'll apply the commission, um, to, to set up one meeting. Or two meetings. I, I don't know how you wanna handle it. Do you wanna put a timeframe on it? Do you wanna, you know...
Well, what, what I was thinking is if the attorney wants to meet with you within the next two weeks, that's possible because you've got all, you've got all of the information and all of the documentation.
I think she does have some legal, or she will have some legal questions regarding his opinion.
That, that's the problem though.
But...
If, if she disagrees with the legal opinion of the town attorney
I can...
and argues with him about that. I mean, I, I don't, I don't see we gain anything with the two of them disagreeing on a legal opinion. He, he's given his opinion.
Right.
I doubt she's gonna change his mind.
Right.
It's his opinion.
There's no reason, there's no reason for me with, with that.
I don't see it either.
She could certainly meet with me and I can report to you at the next meeting and make you help with that.
Because we, we took the town attorney's opinion.
You know...
That's correct.
A month, a month or two ago, we asked, that was requested, and we asked for specific questions.
Right.
That we could forward in writing to Ed. And that would probably be the, the same basis here, is I can meet with her whenever it takes. My office is open. She can come in anytime, call, email, whatever.
That works.
And we can banter back and forth and, and try to narrow down a specific, uh, list of questions or issues or concerns. And then we could have that address those.
Yeah.
The, the next meeting?
Yes, that, that would be my...
I'll give you an update. I don't, I have no idea what the status will be.
I would actually take it a step in between. I wouldn't automatically go to the town attorney with those questions. I would talk to the chairperson because if the questions are frivolous...
Well, we can go through, similar to what we did before where, where a memo was prepared and submitted to Ed with specific questions. You know, we could, uh, the attorney can go through me. I can, you know, attach it and, and do my visual summary.
Okay.
Um, for the commission, you guys can read through it. If you go with the, the complete list or strike one, strike two, whatever, you know, what to forward. We could draft a, another letter from the commission to, to Ed to address the anxiety and test.
No, I, I don't, I don't think we need, I don't think we need, and I don't think it's appropriate at this point to have the applicant propose questions for Ed. She's, she's got, and the club has Ed's opinion. It's, it, it, the opinion is what it is. It's very easy to read. She may or may not have a different legal opinion after she looks at that and all the documentation, and that's fine. But, um, I don't see any reason...
Well, I'll just plan our recording to you next meeting.
Okay.
I'd just like to give the club, um, since, since they now have retained their attorney at least another couple of weeks before we decide since the permit's been withdrawn and we're going to, you know, pursue any enforcement actions.
Cease and desist.
I'd rather have this, I'd rather have this resolved.
Resolved and a cease and desist, right.
Right, and it, it happens to light up.
It can't.
Well, we asked...
Now, otherwise it lines up with...
They had to get a permit.
You know, no need to take immediate action because it's, winter's coming, so...
Well, just, just as a caveat, it's also possible that she might not necessarily want to ask the questions. But she's now trying to go through all the documentation
Oh, she has to adjust it.
that previously laypeople were trying to present to us as they were completely unfamiliar with these other rights and they're, they're not attorneys. So it's possible she might find documents that actually explain things in more detail. Or, um, the town attorney may change his opinion based on what he's looking at. We don't know. So there may be questions, yes, but there also may be additional information that he was privy to because he was making a decision based on what was presented to him about questions.
Well, I'm not so sure that we said we would go back to the town attorney since his opinion was...
No, no, but he's saying she may, who knows, she may find more documents.
Well, she may, but he's telling you go to town attorney. It does cost money and we...
Sure, she can, she can send it to me and whatever she submits, and I'll copy it or whatever.
So we're back to what, uh, Cindy said. Chairman, chairman of the X said that we give them a couple of weeks to get up to speed.
And that's it, yeah.
I think Cindy, it's important to get it right rather than trying to...
So should we list this as a, an agenda item on the next agenda?
I think so.
Yes. Correct.
Assuming they think two weeks is enough time to come back and get up to speed and talk to us.
Well, if not, they don't have to tell us that at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. All right, the next item on the agenda is informal discussion site plan for one eleven West Main Street.
Good, sure. Good evening, my name is John Inocella. I work for the Zarampa Group and we're located at one four six zero zero Detroit Avenue in Lakewood, Ohio. And with me today is Tony Proctor with Ayub Engineering. And they're a local engineering consultant, Ayub engaged for the project. Zarampa Group, a company again I work for, we have an ongoing business relationship with Dollar General Corporation. They're headquartered in Tennessee where we service their development, like their development leg. They're developing new stores for them. All the projects that we do for them is approximately forty a year that we try to do and have been pretty successful doing. Our stores that they would buy the property, they would own and operate the store. So Zarampa Group, the company I work for, is a development company with an agreement with them. We're here tonight, as was mentioned, for informal discussion for the property located at one 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 West Main Street. We do have the property under contract. It's across from seven eleven, Bankers Motors, next to Maple Tire Center.
Excuse me, should maybe turn that a little more towards.
So that is the former Maple Grove.
It's.
It's certainly the Stafford Tavern.
The tavern was just approved.
It's been there since now.
That tavern.
As Matt mentioned, we had the property under contract. It's about a one point one four acre lot. Now, I'll let Tony talk about the site and then I'll talk about the building.
Yeah, it's the site of the, I'll say existing Stafford Tavern. Building sits right in the middle of the lot. Of course, the state road comes through there. The proposed layout of the building, of course, would be the, as you're looking at it, we're looking at this corner right here. One access onto the highway. The, you can see there's two lanes out, one lane in. We're proposing thirty parking spots. I believe the note that Dave had in the memo was that we were short one. We could certainly add that, that was not of our intention, just a kind of proposal to show that it fits on the site. A couple of the other elements would be the fact that, yes, there will be trucks coming in and off the site to stock the building. They can make their full movements on the site, they can get in and out, there'll be no backing onto the highway or anything like that. There will be a dumpster in the back, it will be screened. We have shown gas tanks, they, Dollar General generally likes them, propane tanks. Yes, yes, propane tanks. Dollar General generally likes those to be buried, so if we can, and I talked to the fire chief and burning, there doesn't seem to be an issue in the town. The big thing with the layout would be the, I think, has to do with the fence that they proposed around the site, six foot. It can be wood, can be vinyl, that's certainly subject to discussion. We have shown forty some trees, not including understory plants. Also included as part of the landscape buffer, we've shown some hardwoods over here, some larger canopy trees that we've joined in sort of with the existing canopy trees around the perimeter. And that's all per, we have, what we have is shown per ordinance, we understand this will be part of the discussion. And of course, I think there's some asphalt sidewalk fronting the property right now. We're proposing to put concrete sidewalk in there, nice, smooth. We have an ADA access to the building. So folks that end up in front of the building, if you get into the building, we understand that there may be a large residential area here that the building could serve, that we could get folks in and out of the building that way. This is, you know, again, we're at preliminary discussion stages, so this is kind of our, I'll call it our first crack at this as far as laying the building out, what we could do. And we definitely had to hit some things that Dollar General looks for so that our operations works. And I think John's going to talk a little bit about the building and what that looks like in your neighborhood.
From a design standpoint, we put the emphasis on the front elevation. So this will be the elevation facing West Main Street. We have one entry for customers only and that would be our entry feature. This is an upgrade from what we traditionally or what typically we have done as far as our prototype goes. So we have added some columns on either side of the entry. We have a gabled roof line with decorative trim around the signage. Primary material would be a vinyl wall finish, vinyl wall material both below here and then also at the entry element, we have two different colors proposed. And then there's a composite exterior grade panel on either side of the entry up at a higher level. The other three sides proposing would be a metal siding. Again, going back to the site plan real quickly, so, you know, we do meet all the setback requirements as we review them. We've got the type B plantings and screening that are required along the north and the east. I guess I'd like to then just conclude briefly with a little bit of discussion about Dollar General itself. They operate, and they have over ten thousand stores in the country. I've got some handouts that show typical, these are actual photos of interior of a store, not the exterior. It kind of gives you an idea of the type of products that they have.
Are they unionized?
I don't, I don't believe the workers are unionized. They handed out all my trophies, but, you know, they, you know, a couple of things, they've been existing for more than seventy years. It is not a dollar store where things cost a dollar, it's certainly not that. It is a general store with general merchandise. They, one of the taglines is they help shoppers save time, save money every day. Customers find nationally advertised brands from America's top manufacturer at low everyday prices in convenient neighborhood locations. It's today's neighborhood general store, serving the needs of its customers every day by providing convenience, value and service. So, you know, I know, I have one very close to my house, I shop there frequently, it's things that you need daily.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
Now, I don't mean to be insulting, but did you read our architectural guidelines?
Obviously not.
I don't think I did and I apologize for that.
Terrible.
Gene, I can address that.
I'm an engineer, not an architect, so.
Terrible.
I'll address that.
Please. Are you going to demolish the famous Maple Grove Inn?
The existing building on the site.
The Maple Grove Inn, are you going to demolish it?
Oh, I want to make sure it's the existing building on the site.
Yeah, it's the existing building on the site.
Okay. Right now, our purchase agreement with the owner of that property.
Mr. Bakayaki.
Yes. He has an agreement that he has the right to move the structure. So he is to let us know during the course of our review period in our contract whether or not it's going to be removed or not. So I can't give you a firm answer. But in our purchase agreement, he has the right to move it.
The owner is taking care of removing that building from the site. What he does with it, we.
So he's either going to move it or demolish it, David, not you.
No, that's not correct. He has the option to move the building. If he desires to move the building, he has the option to move the building. In our purchase agreement, it's his option to move the building. He can tell us, you know, prior to the closing on the land that he's decided to move it or he can tell us he's decided not to move it. If he's decided not to move it, then we would need to demolish it in order to get the Dollar General.
Do you realize we have a family dollar store in town?
Dollar General, I'm sure realizes it. I did not.
Have you looked at any other locations in town or is this the only one?
I'm an engineer, I'm sure Dollar General has, and our company for Dollar General has looked at alternate locations. Once they get the property under contract, Dollar General tells us they approve the location, then I get involved as an engineer. So I have not personally.
Just clarify, we're here for informal discussion, you know, a pre-application meeting, whatever you want to call it. I will say that the engineer and the developer has been in contact with me for a while as far as, you know, initial telephone calls or emails regarding requirements for the zone qualification. You know, does the zone and the use, is the use permitted in the zone and what, you know, what zoning requirements there are. We went through that. We met twice, once or twice, twice at the, once with the engineer and twice with, or the second time with both in regards to different aspects and considerations. And this came up after our walk and presentation by Mark Benton. And some of the considerations that he pointed out, I pointed out to these gentlemen. And as I indicated in my memo to you, it's, number one, it's a use that's permitted in the zone. Number two, it's a retail use of dry goods, basically everything but non-perishable items. It's my general understanding of the store. Perishable items, no. It's in close proximity to the borough. There are sidewalks, sidewalks end right here, right now. They're proposing extending sidewalks across from the property, there is no sidewalk there now. People are walking on the edge of the road and then the paved inlet, that's in front of the structure. They provide sidewalk to the parking area, crosswalk across the parking area, bike rack in the corner. So they did take into consideration some of the comments I had. And then we talked about screening along the residential properties as well. And they seem to have taken that into account as well. I offer some other comments in my memo which may be a premature at this point. I mean, we're here for preliminary discussion, but, you know.
But it's helpful for us to read.
Things that we need to keep in mind, lighting, drainage, so forth.
Yeah.
So I think it is a, in my opinion, I think it's a fit within the town. It's, the building that's on the site right now is a landmark in town. It's not a historic building, it's not registered historic, so that limits, you know, there's an emotional attachment for a lot of people in town that are used to seeing that. However, there are not limitations in regards to, you know, being a preserved site or something to that effect. I think the use is appropriate for the area. I think it fits within the transition zone coming out of the borough towards the big Y. And as I said, they're here for discussions. In regards to the aesthetics of the building, I did have discussion with the applicants, with these gentlemen. And, you know, they came with this plan here and with the understanding that we need to talk, you know, find some middle ground, should they move forward, find some middle ground on what they're proposing and much like what you went through with Coal Best.
CVS.
My decision to decide on what the aesthetic's going to be, but I did point out, you know, the things we're going to look for. And I also warned of considerations to the commission of what would be looked for. And in all fairness, they're coming here, you know, with the concept of the site and, you know, this is the first step of formally, you know, speaking with you, so.
Well, we're looking for new businesses to come into this town. I'd like to see it go forward.
A quick question.
This is only informal discussion, Roger.
I know that.
A quick question, Dave.
It's my feeling.
The, as far as Mark Benton and the walk we did, would, he advise pulling that building to the road and parking behind?
He would, and I did mention it to them. And, you know, in our discussions, what's indicated here is they, I don't mean to, I'm familiar enough from talking with them is they're making deliveries basically in general towards the back of the building. A truck would come in and back up. So they need this area in front to make that movement. Should the, if the building was up here, the truck would be unable to make the turning movements. You know, you're talking a tractor trailer coming in. If it was behind the building, it's very limited here, it's more open and I'm assuming would be off hours.
And I want to indicate that it's not a truck that comes, it's not like a truck delivery station where there's trucks coming in and out. But we do need to accommodate, generally Dollar General will have one larger truck that comes a week, once a week. So we need to accommodate that once, one time a week truck instead of having it, you know, try and maneuver off-site. So we, yeah, that was brought up to us about, you know, pulling the site forward. But, you know, exactly right, the reason we have it that way is so we could get the maneuvering in the front and get the truck backing up to the delivery door back.
And I was, we did have that discussion and when I first saw, when the plans were first sent to me, you know, not too long ago, you know, I was a little disappointed that it was still set back, although we did have the discussion about the truck movements. But I was happy to see the allowance for pedestrian access, you know, from the sidewalk. You're not walking across the lawn and, you know, you still have to walk across a parking lot. And that also indicates, looking at the dimensions on the plans that we submitted, is, you know, that's kind of a, I don't want to say conservative, well, conservative approach to the parking lot. There's a lot of area there, overspaced parking spaces, oversized parking spaces, large aisles. It's not a tight packed parking lot like some of the other locations in town.
You need that for the truck.
You need that for the truck and it's better for the traffic going in and out as well. And my count on the traffic spaces, I, in, and I haven't done a full in-depth review, but I came up with one space short based on square footage, which is not necessarily a big deal, especially in light of considerations to pedestrian traffic.
Looking at that drawing, it looks familiar, the truck pulls in in front and drives the car to the back back. He's going to have a hard time going around that corner here.
No. No.
It doesn't look that wide, but it could be.
Well, I'm sure they took it.
Yeah, we ran a movement on it with what we have. And the simulation that we have, the auto term program that we use to do that is generally pretty conservative. If you could do it on the computer, those guys can do it in the field, so.
Is there a door on that side at all for people to go in and out?
Not for people to go in and out. There is a, there's a loading door back here. Basically the building, there's a wall along the rear of the building in this area here and that's sort of the storage and receiving area back here. That is not for public access, that's just for unloading the truck. The front door is the only thing for.
So the parking lots, kind of those parking spaces on the side are for. So the parking lots, kind of those parking spaces on the side are for people coming for the store or people who work there? These parking spaces are to meet code.
It's a number, there's a number of spaces, the regulations determine, you know, the number of spaces required based on gross square footage. And that incorporates both employees and customers, is my understanding.
Is there a certain time in the day where the trucks come to deliver?
At nine AM to five PM.
Nine, anytime in between that. So they're going to pull in and they're going to back up, and people are parking and kids, and you've got a tractor trailer backing up.
That's where I was reaching for it, yeah.
I got there, yeah.
I mean, it's hard enough in my van to see kids when they back up, let alone a tractor trailer truck.
Would those be the normal operation hours?
It just looks off the site.
Normal operation hours are eight AM to 10 PM. Sunday, they shorten the hours generally, it's like, and it's all site-specific. But the hours of operations on Sunday are, open up a little bit later and closed a little bit earlier. But eight AM to 10 PM, Monday through Saturday is child hours. And it's only one truck? One truck per week, yeah.
Well, we can deal with the finer points of it if this is just a point.
Yeah, this is an informal, you know, that's, you know, any thoughts you have. If you would like to indicate to these gentlemen what your thoughts are on this.
On the architect?
Yeah.
Oh, definitely.
Well, now's a good time, that's what we're here for.
I thought you wanted to wait till they, oh.
No.
Well, I, I think.
I think what, I think what they're seeking is input on all aspects.
Exactly, are seeking out impact on all, our input on all aspects.
I think, I think reading our architectural regs will, will get you there. I mean, it really will.
And I apologize, that was brought up earlier.
It's okay, it happens.
I was, earlier looking at my notes, and it was brought up. But I was also given a copy of the CDF, so I cut that in.
So the mechanicals will be on the roof?
Roof copy, yes.
And the mechanicals will be hidden by parapets, correct?
That's what we're talking about with our architecture.
That's one of the details, though.
A big detail.
They're not there.
They are not there, no.
Flat roof doesn't turn the sound too much.
No more.
Although this is an improvement over what most of the Dollar Generals.
Oh, I know, it is. But I'm going to go online and look at some other, like in Avon. Are you located in Avon or Simsbury or, you know, where's another?
I think it's going over Ellington, I think.
Vernon.
Well, I want to see, I want to see.
I'm from Ohio.
I know, I want to see the architectural.
I had no idea, we're burning this.
There is one in Avon, Ohio.
Never been there. No, I really need to see what Dollar General will do for architectural design based on the different towns and cities, because CBS and Avon certainly doesn't look like a CBS of romantic. You know, I mean, you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I do. Most of their stores I mentioned earlier are not company-owned stores. Like you mentioned CBS wasn't owning their site. They must have leased, where, you know, so most of Dollar Generals over the 10,000 stores, most of them are leased based in a shopping center or part of a strip center. This is unique where they owned it, and that's what we do. They're typically freestanding, they've always been freestanding. This is, that's kind of the prototype.
Am I going to like it?
No.
Oh, no, 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 no.
This is already an improvement.
Instead of the maple grove. This is an improvement from what we found right in the beginning. Oh, you don't want us to see this, no, no, no.
See, he wanted to start with this, I said, no, no.
No, no, no.
I should have listened to you. Broom away.
The building itself would be under 10,000 square feet.
It's a 9,100 square foot building.
Ninety-one?
Whereas, you know, most CBSs are 13 to 25. I don't know what the one is that's going up. Generally, about 13 to 25.
I can't think of anything else, David. And you've covered a lot, Dave, in your, you know, work here for us. I think all the big issues we've talked about and what we want to see.
And I also added, it looks like, at least where we're at right now, it doesn't look like we're going to need any variances, any dimensional variances, of course, no use variances. I'm not sure David was clear on that, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there that, you know, we, what you're looking at up there, that stuff is all taken into consideration, so. You know, obviously one comments what we need to think about, but, you know, just wanted to make everybody aware that we did do a little bit of homework on that, you know, as we laid that out, so.
Yeah, Dave has let, you know, laid that out for us too, and the paperwork he's given us at the beginning of the meeting. Did you?
My memo that I gave you.
He gives a write-up of everything tonight, dog, if you go through it. Which we do appreciate, by the way, Dave, this is wonderful.
Well, it's a little fluid today, so if there's.
We're getting used to this, though, so you're going to have to keep doing that. It's like, it helps us to have something to, it answers some of our questions before we ask them, which is great.
All right, we have some time for some limited comments of Diane.
Can you just walk us through what happens next, because, just for the public? So this is a preliminary question, and then what happens, what are the next steps?
So this is, this is a pre-application discussion, which is a, it's really a new procedure that we started maybe a year or a year and a half ago. What will happen now is presumably they will take into consideration some of the comments and discussions tonight and come back with a permit application for the site.
This is just a site plan approval. It is not a special use permit, it's only subject to site plan approval. But because of the location and the nature of the business, it would be before the commission. It's not an administrative.
Will there be a public hearing on the approval of this application?
It'll be a public meeting, right? This is not a specialty permit, so it does not require a public hearing.
Can I ask a question to them?
Sure.
Do they know that there's a tenant with a two-year lease there? I know you're the architect's.
That would be something I'm sure their corporate office would work out. You can buy out leases.
Right.
I highly doubt they're going to develop a site where they're going to have a tenant soon, you know, so.
What Nancy said about looking into other stores, I know Vernon had an issue with the architect, architecture in Vernon too, so you may want to see how they resolve their issue with that store.
I can call the, get you on Vernon.
Yes.
Question with the informal process. Does that mean that you guys might get to a point where you say, no, we cannot do this?
Not tonight.
I don't mean tonight, but I mean, is there a possibility, the decision we made where you say, no, we cannot do this?
A formal application could be made that the commission could deny. It's a, it's site plan approval, it's not, special use permit allows the commission a certain latitude over the regulations. If they meet all the zoning requirements, they're an approved use and meet the zoning requirements, there's really not much the commission can do in the way of denying it, if, as long as they meet, you know, parking, screening. The only, the only caveat to that is the consideration of architecture in conforming with the surrounding community or surrounding neighborhood.
How about the, because I know you mentioned it's not historical. And I'm not an expert enough to know why, why it's not and why it couldn't be. You mentioned landmark. From the perspective of the commission, what's the difference between landmark and his historical site, and what is the value between both of them? From my perspective, they seem the same.
A specific certification or designation versus, versus an emotional attachment. And if you stick around, we're going to be discussing this work there later tonight, so.
It would have to be a registered historical.
You're talking about emotional, but what about what's best for the town? So that's different than emotional, it's what maybe the philosophy or the town is moving towards. So that's not emotional, that's more of philosophy, where they're going versus emotional.
That's, that's true, that's for the commission to consider.
Thank you, that's what I want, thank you.
As we develop the boutique sort of downtown business community, I think one of the things that's most viable is traffic. And I think this sort of store draws traffic to town. And Stafford years ago used to be the shopping mecca for Northeastern Connecticut, and we should be still today, but we let our businesses die away. And if we can get traffic into town, we can cultivate those boutique businesses that make us that little nifty corner of the state. But without traffic, those stores aren't going to survive.
I, Dave, you just said if it meets all the specialty requirements and your zoning and everything and you approve it. We just went through with that package store that didn't meet the requirements because it was near a church and a school, and yet you went and approved it, so. I'm confused as to what you approved now, only because.
We can answer that.
Okay.
We have certain leeway on some things, special use permit, we have some leeway. If, if something meets our regulations, and you can sometimes know that if you deny it, it's going to go to court and you're going to lose. A commission might decide to do that anyway. They can, they can say, this means so much to us, but we're still going to deny something and possibly have it overturned by a court. But we, we have some leeway, we don't have complete leeway. And what the public feels and thinks makes a huge difference to us. And that last public hearing, the only public hearing tonight on the package store, I think we had one comment from the audience during the public hearing. It makes a difference to us. We try very hard to come into a public hearing with an open mind and listen to how the people feel. And that's where our regs give us a little bit of leeway. Now, the regs don't say, if a package store applies and there's a church nearby, deny it. It says we can. We have a choice. That's how the rules work. And as far as this is concerned, there are some overriding things. We do have a statement of purpose. If we feel something fits the regs, but as a board, the majority is uncomfortable with it because of our statement of purpose that it, for whatever reason, it doesn't fit in, we feel to the town or the area of the town, we can deny it for that reason. You know, right in our first page is our statement of purpose. So again, we have some leeway there, courts can overturn us.
So if we don't have a public hearing on this and you have residents that are for or against it, how are we ever going to know, you know, what the town wants?
I think the commission is, is open to listening to the feelings of people that take the time to show up to the meeting, like you tonight, right now. This is not a public hearing, this is, this is an informal discussion right now, and, and, you know.
The chairman has allowed people to talk, has allowed people to talk. We don't, she doesn't have to do that.
I understand.
The board could say, we're not going to get into this. But she chose to let people express themselves, and we can do that again, too.
So will be out of the chance for the public to speak about this, is that what you think?
There will not be a public hearing, but the meeting will be public. Take a look, we publish, we publish our agendas on the town website and in the reminder, so keep an eye out for it, and you can always submit written comments to Dave's office.
Okay. Well, it just says 111 West Main Street, you didn't tell us what that was about. You know, so it's very general.
I didn't know what it was tonight, and I'm a commissioner.
This is a.
I had to ask, is this the maple grove?
First of all, we need to get back on track for these gentlemen who have traveled a long distance to talk about this in a preliminary sense with us. So if we have any other comments specific to their project, I think those.
Can the house, can, is it too late to apply for historical? Does the house qualify as a historical building? Is it too late? Or does it meet the criteria, is it before 1900s?
What I've looked into is the owner has to approve it.
The owner would have to approve it, I believe it was built in 1920.
Eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty, okay. There is a survey that was done in 1992, just about every significant building in town that's on file in the town clerk's office. That building is listed in there. There's a quick study, it was a survey done on a grant by University of Connecticut, I believe, that is listed in there, and there's some details about the building. There's, as they have mentioned, there's a tavern in there now, there's a restaurant in there before. It sat vacant before that, there was a restaurant in power for that for several years. You know, I've grown up in town, I understand the site of the building, I understand it being as a landmark. And I understand emotional attachments a lot of people may have to that. However, you know, it's, it comes down to the owner committing to that. And like I said, we're going to be discussing our historic history in a little while in the hollow, and.
I understand that if you allow me one more statement. A couple of weeks ago, I was part of the EDC meeting, they allowed me to be part of it, thank you. And they were talking about how the town, we were talking about how it would be necessary for this town to become a historical, you know, town. We don't have enough.
That's a whole, that's a whole separate discussion with a lot of details that we can talk about.
Historic overlay.
Are there any other comments or questions from the commission?
Is there a proposed timeline for this project? Like when it would be estimated to start?
Right now, it's just an informal discussion, nothing's even been applied for.
We've done all our due diligence, so we've done a survey titled Research Environmental. We had to do a phase one and a phase two because there was some concern, but that came back good. So we've gotten over that hurdle of due diligence on the property, so we're ready to move forward. Yeah, I don't have a schedule like when we plan to come back, but we, we don't have anything stopping us from submitting.
To rephrase my question, at what point would be the soonest the Stafford Tavern would be forced to close its doors?
That would be up to the owner.
I don't know, I don't own the property.
It's up to the owner.
All right, this has been very helpful.
If you want, you can have them.
Do you, sir, do you have cards for the secretary down?
I wrote my info down.
Yeah, she's more important than the reporter. She's more important.
Yes, she's the first person that said, yes, it's okay. She's pretty impressive.
She does the minutes and parts I mean.
And let's see the notes, it was for next Tuesday night, I believe.
Next Tuesday night, we have a letter from the Economic Development Commission dated October seventh to the Planning, Zoning and Conservation Commissions. The EDC would like to request a joint commission with Planning and Zoning and Conservation. The purpose of the proposed joint meeting is to establish a working relationship with the commissions. Address the economic zoning conservation needs of Stafford, date is October twenty-first, twenty fourteen seven P M. Topics for discussion, proposed gas, sewer, water and fiber optic line installation in Stafford. Need to grow tax space. Discussion of Don Paul report with the recommendation, recommended changes for all commissions. EDC members look forward to meeting with the commissions, please advise if this date is available sincerely, Francis, or you.
Where at seven o'clock?
Okay.
Where, it doesn't say where.
We don't, I'm sorry, we have, we have two, two folks here from the EDC. Three, I'm sorry.
We'll have to determine if we're gonna meet there, it would have to be a larger room then. I don't know if we could all fit in here, be open for the town meeting, we have to upstairs.
Upstairs, but it would be the town hall somewhere.
It'd be the town hall, yeah. Laurie and I could coordinate the agenda.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea and it's something we've talked about for some time.
Absolutely, to get together, yeah. Would you like a motion, Cindy?
Hold on a minute, Nancy.
I'm sorry.
I I think it's a great idea too, we've all wanted this to happen for a while. It's good that it's coming together. Is the October twenty-first, seven P M cast in stone where a lot of people have already agreed to it? Has the Conservation Commission agreed to that?
I'm on the Conservation Commission and we've all been alerted by email and as far as I know, we're attending.
It's gonna be almost impossible for me to make it and I don't wanna miss it. If everyone can make it, then I have to do what I can do.
Did you have any alternative dates or?
This is, this is the first step in in our dialogue.
The hardest thing of all is to get everybody together.
We'll have you on speakerphone, Gene, so. But no, I think it's, I think it's important to at least get the first step underway.
Yep.
I, it's gonna be a broad discussion, I'm sure.
If we could make it earlier, that would be a huge help for me, but.
You mean earlier than that night?
Than seven.
That's fine with me.
You can't make it that night?
I can, after seven. You're fudgeable?
I am, I don't know about the rest of them.
That's tough for other members, so. Stay with the seven and I'm gonna try to cancel the other thing I have, but it's okay, there's enough members that. We gotta get it started, you can't, you can't let.
I think this is the first of many of these discussions that works.
Oh, it's fantastic.
So do you need a motion or is it just that we're agree to go?
I think, I think we're.
I just agreed to go, thank you, Francis, thank you.
I can, I can work with them, yeah, we'll we'll put an agenda and get a room established, you think upstairs? Either upstairs or senior center.
Now, you said.
That would be better, probably.
Senior center might be good.
Better you can hear.
So the the public. On your agenda, you have public comment, is that what you're saying or they comment in between or? I I don't know how you do your your meetings, you said because of the the public, is that a special agenda item?
Well, it'd be a public meeting, we need to. It'd be a public meeting, so the answers are in the location and the time. We might have a lot of people attending, but the answers I kind of would like to get through the discussion between the three.
Three commissions, okay.
Commissions.
Okay.
Set grandpoint out, he's got some 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 bullet points on the ladder and that's the the start of the meeting. Maybe, maybe.
But the the public can also interact.
But I'd like to do that at the end of the meeting.
At the end of the meeting, okay, good, that's all we wanted to know, very good. Because I, it's important that the townspeople come and and we get their input.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
I I don't think this would be the first meeting.
Oh, no.
But I think we need to talk about it.
Yeah, great.
Thank you for initiating.
Yep.
We're forward to. All right, next item on the agenda, discussion of possible action reviews of regulations.
Dave, I had worked and I'm so sorry I didn't make it two weeks ago, but I was sick. But I, excuse me. I went on a website about historic overlay zoning. I know it's a little bit too late based on what happened this evening, but actually it's from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation. And it's it's a, it's a very, very good article about historic overlay zoning in Connecticut. Historic overlay zoning is another avenue a Connecticut municipality can use to protect historic areas and structures rather than establishing a local historic district. Now, Amy, we talked about that. It basically says we do not have to have a historic commission if we do specific, is that what you were gonna say?
I just wanna interrupt you. Amy brought some stuff to our attention at the last meeting. Here in Triano, the town clerk did some research on his own to help me and then help me do some additional research. And I summarized it quick, I was, I was rushing on that letter. But basically, as Amy indicated, there was an area designated and listed on a national register of historic, a national historic district, which was Stafford Hollow. They even, I found all kinds of information, which I didn't, wasn't aware of before, but, I mean, it's even outlined on a map what the district is. However, you know, in that, that was nineteen eighty-seven, and it was listed there. I summarized it in a memo. Because, just because it's listed there does not impose any restrictions on the owners of those structures. A commission was never, a historic commission or historical society, a commission was never established. The district was was drawn up and they're signed up, but I I don't believe the district was formally formally established at a town meeting.
Well, the the town meeting part comes in when you have a historic district commission, which was never enacted.
Right, right, I mean, it got up to that point and and stopped.
Right, and then stopped.
But I have the list of properties, I've got everything else, so as far as one area I have, you know, from the work they've done previously. Also in here, there's a there's a list of other areas that they they thought should be considered and some criteria. I didn't have a chance to make copies, it's it's all this stuff, which I can make copies for the commission members and get out to you. I didn't get a chance to run all the docs today, but they have recommendations. They had a Hydeville, Orchival, Stafford Springs, including the potential sub-districts of Business District, East Hill, Foxville, Highland Terrace, Hyde Park, Converseville, Furnace Ave, Prospect Hill, then Stafford Commons North, Stafford Commons South, Staffordville and West Stafford. These were other areas to be nominated or considered. Then they have a comprehensive management-oriented historic preservation plan should be prepared for the town and et cetera, et cetera, and they have recommendations, two pages of recommendations, three pages of recommendations and considerations, which I think is important for everybody to read before we go too far into it. But I think you're absolutely correct, Nancy, that we need to look at in terms of overlay districts as opposed to.
Right.
Commissions.
Not necessarily as opposed to, but in conjunction, it could also be looked at.
No, actually, Amy disagrees with with that. And let me explain. If you have a historic overlay zoning, in certain instances, it may be more beneficial for a municipality to use zoning regulations for historic preservation than establishing a local historic district property commission. A zoning change overlay does not require the two-thirds approval of property owners in order to establish it or approval of an ordinance by the municipal legislative body. To amend a local zoning ordinance and add a historic overlay, it is not necessary to have a community election. So that's basically the zoning board. Now, that's a historic, but then you go to village district. This is totally different. So we have to decide which way would be the best and then pursue it. I would like to pursue more information from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation because they have grants.
Well, there's there's grants that that applies, yes. And and I I just wanna remind, this came up early in the discussions, is I wanna remind the commission of, you just mentioned two-thirds of the property owners voting, you know, a public election. You need to coordinate and fund the election as far as preparing a ballot, counting the ballots, holding a referendum for that area, whatever, there's costs associated with that and there's a burden. There's a burden on the town clerk's office and possibly.
But you miss that, you do not have to.
Well, I'm, yeah, right, but the first part is for the historic district, if we do it that way, there's a burden on the town.
A zoning, historic overlay zoning, right. You, we can just do a regular regulation for historic preservation, that's what you're saying, you want to call it.
Right, that's why my my preference is to.
To just make a.
Try to incorporate it, but kind of streamline it.
Right. Do not call it historic, right?
I I don't know what the terminology would be, but it's it's not, to not require two-thirds of a vote and to not hold every property owner, you know, to, you know,
Okay.
replace original glass with, you know, nineteen.
There's just one more paragraph and then you can decide if we should pursue more information from the Connecticut Trust. In essence, a village district act is a form of historic overlay zoning. But the Village District Act is also a zoning tool which can protect a community's character and historic development patterns. Connecticut P A ninety-eight dash one sixteen allows municipal zoning commissions to create village districts to preserve historic and scenic resources and regulations as part of the town zoning. The scope of the village district is a little broader than a local historic district, so we could review landscaping, road design, maintenance of public views and all new construction and major reconstruction. Like historic overlay zoning, creating a village district does not require approval of property owners, municipal government or review by the state Historic Preservation Office, but is established by a local zoning ordinance. The creation of a village district is also a positive alternative to establishing a local historic district if that is not a feasible option. For more on village districts, we can have more information from protecting historic resources, preservation, et cetera. So this website is really excellent. I mean, there's grants, there's money, they have grant programs, so they have the, on this side, Dave. No, that's where you went to too, okay, but that was my job, so I did my job.
Can I interject now? Okay, be prepared, some some thoughts, as you know, it's an issue for me. First of all, we we have spoken last time when I brought you the information, I had spoken to the State Economic Development Commission, which oversees the historic properties in the in the state and historic registry. And they are more than happy to speak to us, present us with information, et cetera. Right now, I'm currently coming through both that website and the previously filed documents in nineteen eighty-seven and putting them all together because that original packet, there was a lot of work done with it, but it never got to the final point of creating the Historic District Commission for the town. There are advantages to that in that we can apply for grants, as you point out, under municipal bodies. We can also have a stay on demolitions for ninety days so that they could be reviewed by the Historic District Commission. And I think tonight was probably an example of what that might encounter. But more importantly, there have also been changes since that inventory has done, we've lost some of those buildings. Rules and regulations have changed, our zoning has changed, there are a lot of different things that have gone on. So I think it proved that we consult with our town historical society because I'm sure they're very aware of what all this is and probably can give us a lot of direction. But also before we start making any final decisions as to whether we wanna do village districts or whether we wanna do straight statutes and regs, probably we should just kind of discuss what we have first and force and what are our goals. Do we wanna just get grant money or do we wanna prevent destruction of old buildings, remove both, do we wanna encourage business? And as a side note, to speak to your point, I'm strongly in the opinion that historic preservation is not mutually exclusive to business. In fact, I think you can promote business and bring a draw with tourism, with special historic events and so forth. There have been so many towns and states that do this on a regular basis, it's a huge income draw, huge.
I couldn't agree more.
You bring in the traffic, you have like a Stafford Days.
But I think you have to keep that behind with a building like like that, which is a wonderful building. I've lived here for a long time, I have a great grandfather that died in the Revolutionary War, I'm pretty historical. It costs a hell of a lot of money to keep that building closed.
Oh, yeah.
And I was thinking about you giving a grant to David, I mean, I I don't know David all that well.
The grants, the grants pertaining to to historic buildings in particular, all grants are, have different criteria. Historic grants can be very, very tough and strenuous to get you, not that they're not worth applying for. You have to have the right, I mean, one of the things right now is we have that district, it's it's listed. There's there's potential grants available for the Old Town Hall, that's a town building, there's town building grants. There's business grants within historic milk con stores listed in there, I don't know how the coffee corner works into that, but it's, you know, it's classified, so there's grants you can go after, but going to that.
I I drove through Avon yesterday and it's a wonderful county, you drive down forty-four, but I look at all those historic looking buildings and what I see is new shopping center after new shopping center after new shopping center. And they look historically correct, but they're all brain buildings. The cost of maintenance, the cost of repairs, the cost of heat, everything is cheap. You try resurrecting an old building like that and it can hit the bank, it's a money sucker.
And also to your point, that's that's one of the reasons, I think, before we get right on the topic of should we do regulations or what, first we need to inventory what we have and find out what's what's realistic, what's real. I'm not saying let's strangle businesses or property owners, quite the opposite. I don't think property owners should just have a drop on their head that they can't do anything.
I'm, I'm not a Dollar General fan, I'm not, I'm not here to advocate for them. I I think that right now, if I wanna buy a pair of underwear, I have to leave town. And that's a tragedy. This should be the shopping mecca for this corner of the state. And we have to hit a synergistic level of interrelated businesses that will draw traffic. Because once we get the traffic, the, say, for forty-four, we'll have people that are flooding the stores. We don't have the traffic yet and we've gotta get the business. I think if we're gonna get Dollar General, we make them build a historic looking building like Avon has. That works in this community.
Well, I think you could go to Bank of America that's already there, tear down that building and leave the other one alone.
May I make a comment about that too, you mentioned the traffic. Before I opened my business and I'm new to the business world, I do my research. We have plenty of traffic in in going to downtown. The issue is how do we get that traffic to stop in downtown? So it's two different things.
Where can you park in downtown?
Well, yeah, those are all the things that go on the root of the cause, not that the dollar store can bring traffic. We need to be in traffic differently. And my opinion, coming to this town, this town has something unique that Avon doesn't have. We have a structure. We have a structure, we have this quaint town look and feel that cannot be, obviously, anywhere else. So why work against that? Why work against that? I live in Summers, we don't have that. Summers doesn't have that. You live here. So why not work towards, to what we have already, not reinvent the wheel with a Dollar Store?
I think Amy's, Amy's on the right path as far as inventory, what we have.
Well, that's
And, and I think your most important statement was a vision or a goal of what we have.
Right. We don't need to jump to let's put rules, let's find out what do we wanna do.
Exactly. And then we come up with two or three alternatives.
Right.
And then, and that goes on, that's one of the things that we defer to Don Holland for. When we have two or three alternatives, you know, get some direction from him. We make the decision and then polish it up from there.
And I think we need direction from the historical society.
Oh, absolutely.
They have to have input here.
Absolutely.
I'm not an expert on the town history and I don't wanna inadvertently do something wrong while we're talking about this. So this is an important issue.
Right.
Because in addition to preserving our historical research, uh, resources, I think we're on the cusp of, if we meet with the Economic Development Commission, you guys might say, hey, we have this great idea for this section of town. Well, let's run with that if we can do it. So we're not ready to put in rules yet, but we need to have a conversation. And this meeting between the commissions, as you know, I've been advocating for a long time. And I think it even goes beyond our three commissions, we need to include several others. Because we're doing zoning regulations, but we don't know what you guys are doing in terms of, you might have a thought process on what we need to bring into town, what we shouldn't allow in town. Uh, we, we don't wanna operate in a vacuum because, you know, best case scenario.
It's a classic.
I think we also need to meet with the, the Business Association members.
I think we do.
The, the selectmen.
Yes.
Uh, we, we all need to communicate. It's communication that's been lacking for years. And we have tried and tried and tried. And I think it's what happened.
Dave just suggested too, he had suggested in the last meeting, that we should look towards, um, putting in some workshops and this, this would be a perfect topic.
Absolutely. But, but, but you need someone who's gonna chair the workshop. You're gonna have to have a, a specific direction because you can't let everybody just
No, we run it, we run it, we run it, we run it as a meeting.
As a meeting.
And it's a, and it's a workshop meeting and, and chairman or, or appointed chairman or whatever, you know, allows comment.
Right.
You know, discussion, comment, maybe back and forth.
Needs to be organized.
Needs to be organized. You can't, you won't get nothing done.
No, you won't.
And, you know, the historical society input is critical. Um, this research, like Amy said, there's a ton of work that leads to this.
They did a lot of work.
A lot of work. And there's a lot of suggestions, recommendations that need to be digested. And then you have, uh, the people, the public that, that, you know, that's who affects the most. You know, so we need public input on it and then we get, you know, two, three options of which way you wanna go or how you wanna go about it, or maybe the one or two, whatever.
I think
And then we polish it with Donald after.
And like the, um, Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation should be included once we get to that point too. So and I think they, they have a lot of, they, they helped a lot of, they hit Bridgeport, uh, oh God, it was all different towns that they've got grant money for and worked with them and actually helped them write regulations.
Yeah, like you said, I talked to them and they were very, very helpful.
Excellent.
They wanted to come and talk to us and everything.
Yep.
Um, so
So they worked with Westport, Bridgeport, New Haven. Um, it's, it's amazing.
I don't know if that was something under grant money or voluntarily though.
Well, no, this is, um, I don't know. Tell you the truth, I don't know. I don't, if you got some money, forget it.
I mean, it, it costs, it costs bucks, you know?
Well, that's why, like you said, I'm just putting together some bullet points as I'm going through this information that there are about ten points. Um, because it is actually pretty complicated in some spots. But there's a lot out there for, for the after. And the after work is aren't even done, they've gotten started on the inventory.
Right.
But I think as a town, we really have to be careful with the artery of 190.
Right.
Because that's our main street that needs to be expanded.
Yeah.
And, you know, we, we love our little areas and we love our buildings. But the problem is, we don't, we don't have the revenue. We need the revenue. And the revenue's gonna come on that artery because that's where the traffic is. That's the only place the traffic is. So if we wanna do preservation, uh, I don't think 190's a place for preservation because it's, it, and I'm on a historic building. But I, 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 we, we need to see the growth. You know, growth is gonna come on that
Well, and this is, and this again is why our commissions all need to speak. Because the zoning board, we might have this great idea about preserving historic structure, but at the same time, we don't wanna strangle the economic department either. Certainly not quite the opposite.
Well, I, I'm not, um, wishing to say anything about any particular areas, but we got like Simon says at the other end, um, which is not particularly pretty. And things like that would be awful nice if they were anything other than, that, even making a living. And I'm happy for them, I wouldn't wanna stop them, but, you know, we're worried about one thing. We got this going on. It's, it's kind of strange. I mean, I think that that's a real, uh, that's a point in which we really need to make sure that we get as many businesses as we possibly can on that corridor. And historic preservation, I think is great, but I just don't think that corridor deserves it. Because it's just a, it's, it's the growing point of Stafford Springs.
Well, and that's not what the discussion was pointing to so much as it was just a
No, I know, I'm just trying to protect, uh, or, or not really protect, but I'm trying to advocate for growth. We all need it, that the town needs it.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm actually very strongly
And, you know, grant money and all that kinda stuff is great, but that does, does that, does, that doesn't go on permanently until these buildings get older and more defuncty. Yeah, okay, so he gets, somebody gets a grant, uh, gets some grant dollars and
We, we still pay for the grants.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and what happens? I mean, he goes on for another couple of years. I think he has to generate money, has to generate cash in order to take care of himself and grant. That's the scary part with trying to stop, um, this pattern of what seems to be happening. We've got some neat businesses going, going up in the, in the town and, uh, do I like them per se? No, I'm not real fond of them, but it's a tax base. And that's the type of taxpayers we need.
No, and I absolutely agree with you. And historic preservation, I'm not saying do complete horse historic preservation. I mean, I don't think any of the board has, has said that. It's just that right now, we don't really have any good sense of what we should be preserving, what we shouldn't, or where we should go. That's why the pre-discussion is important because we can say, okay, well, if we're gonna focus the 190 corridor, that's the whole point of the conservation plan.
I just think
Where should we put growth? Where should we pull these businesses in to grow our tax base?
I just think it's a tough time economically to even consider deciding the growth. And, you know, if you, if you have a gift for it, you kinda have to come out.
But Mr. Rossi, we, here we have the First Student, we have that big, big building there, that's empty. We have the bank building, that's empty.
Yep.
We can't get them in. Why do they wanna demolish a beautiful landmark when they have this big, beautiful one that they
Price of the property.
could probably go in, huh?
Price, price of the property.
You can't be selective over the customer's call.
But why can't we get businesses in? We've got these empty buildings, why? I don't understand, they're not coming to us.
It's, it's all have to, it all has to work together as far as the value of that property. It has to be conducive to that business that's coming in. It has to be the right size, it has to be the right shape, it has the right value.
So who's reaching out to these corporations? Like David must have reached out to Tennessee, the Dollar General. Uh, you know, I, they contacted him.
Oh, David Bakayaki? I don't, I don't know if you
That's what I'm saying, we need to reach out to these corporations and these different companies. Like, like Butch Clark got peoples into town.
We can't, we can't reach out and then say we have a, you know, we can't reach out to them and then say we have this historic building and you can't do that.
No, 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 I'm talking about the First Student and the bank that's empty. I mean, we've got businesses that are vacant now. I'm sure someone out there could utilize it.
We, we need to get it started.
Who, who starts it?
That road has to get going.
Is it the selectmen, is it the economic? I mean, we
Starts with me, I've already started it. I'm on sites and I'm, I'm working on it.
On what?
I'm, I'm First Student and the bank site. And like I mentioned to this commission and to the Economic Development, is that we're putting together like a marketing, uh, type plan with a radius around each center and Bacchus Motors as far as
Oh, Bacchus, yes.
What the, what the surrounding towns within a ten-mile radius, twenty-mile radius, thirty-mile radius, what the populations are, median income, um, traffic counts on 190, on 32, what those are so that I can, instead of cold calling, cold mailing, or emailing development, development companies in regards to those sites. Now, First Student is under a broker. I've talked extensively with a broker listing that site. We're looking to change, that, that zoning right now is messed up where First Student was. It was half industrial, half residential.
No kidding.
And then somebody considers a highway business. We need to clarify that with a zone change application. The, the bank site, uh, basically never should have been permitted. That's an industrial zone, that's a retail use industrial zone, which isn't allowed in our regulations. So we're looking for a zone change there to make a corridor, a highway business.
Well, that, that's
So we are addressing that.
That's housekeeping, we can do that.
I know, but we're working towards that, but that, you know, how can you market a property if it's zoned for one thing?
You have to reach out to them.
You can't market it.
Like Butch Clark, he went up to New Hampshire, he's, he toured the, the peoples. He went to the corporate headquarters, he talked to them. They came down and they looked at the, the location and, and they said, fine, and they came. I guess that's what has to happen, that's what you're doing.
We need to negotiate a travel budget for me.
But also, I agree with that.
There is no budget.
But if we, if we could though, just to get back to the historical, um, regulations or overlay zone or whatever, what, what we're doing is we're really starting from zero because we have nothing now. And I, and I think, I think we all recognize that we've got such historical value in this town. And it's, I don't think any of us wanna impose any kind of regulations that are gonna cause any kind of stagnation. But there's, it's a balance and I, and I think this is, I mean, I, I just feel very strongly that we need to at least look at all of our
I'm not denying any kinda, uh, historic preservation. I think that's great, but I just don't think that 190 deserves, deserves it. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, and that we're not
And I got in historic building sitting there.
Right, right.
I, I'm just saying that if we, if we try to continue the, the, the historic portion of 190, which, I mean, if we go, if we take a ride along it, yes, there's a couple of historic buildings, but across the streets, brand-new city, that's right, it's very light. Um, across the street from, um, the proposed site tonight, what is there? The old desolate Bacchus Motors building, uh, 7-Eleven, and then the, um,
Maple Tire.
Maple Tire, it's all business. So, I mean, and you go up further to the bank, what's across from that? Well, that's
Right.
the other building. So I, I'm just saying that, you know, preservation's one thing, but preservation's on, on, on that artery, I just don't think we should be considering.
Well, and I think we're gonna be talking, right, that corridor at our meeting
That corridor.
We'll talk to that.
On Tuesday.
Yeah, if I had to add one thing, you talk about the empty bank building and I'm an ex-banker and I'll tell you, no bank ever left a site that was making the money. The question is, why didn't Bank of America make money there? They're a pretty successful franchise worldwide. And I, I'll fall back on, you need traffic. You need a vital business community and that bank would never left out.
And then what's the difference between that and where Maple Grove is though? I mean, they're not like very far apart from each other.
They're from both places, but they didn't leave anywhere they were making money.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Dollar General is, they do very well in small towns.
We're, I'm just saying that the bank and Maple Grove are close together. It's not like they're two different parts of town.
Probably send a lot as a separate
But, okay. Or could I make their, no, they look
Maybe just a different kinda business. Can I jump?
Nice.
Fran, I'll copy you with the historic information as well, just so we have for our discussion.
I do think they'll send us copies of all
Right, I'll put it with that stuff.
Okay. Um, I don't know if you, I kinda circled and starred this.
If you wanna pass out a little
They want it.
Yeah, make sure I have the same one.
Yeah, okay. You can probably reprint it too. Cause I have some writing on it. Solar.
We're gonna talk about solar next time.
Okay, great. Can we go home now?
You make the motion.
I make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Approved.
All in favor?
Discussion, discussion.
Discussion. I wanna go home, I wanna go home.
Okay, no discussion.